Good morning and welcome to the November 15th, 2023 regularly scheduled Board Meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our Chaplain, Commissioner Cameron Cepeda?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we have so much to be thankful for today. We thank you for your goodness and your mercy that endures forever. And we thank you for our law enforcement. And we especially thank you for our Hillsborough County deputies that were injured in the line of duty, Corporal Carlos Brito and Deputy Manuel Santos. We lift them up before you and we thank you for your healing power that just go through them and continue, continue healing their bodies. And we just thank you that they'll have a long and healthy life. And we pray for their families as well. We pray for all law enforcement, all of our law enforcement and firefighters and first responders. We pray for their protection. We ask you to lead them and guide them as they're serving. And we pray for all of our military and those that have lost their lives. We pray for them. We pray for their families. We lift them up. We ask you for peace, peace beyond all understanding to guarish and mount guard over their hearts and their minds. And we thank you for, we pray for peace in Israel and we ask you to bless them, Lord, in the name of Jesus. And we pray, ask you to bless this meeting in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Cameron Cepeda. Before, go to our first two proclamations, just want to announce that Commissioner Kemp is running a few minutes behind, but she'll be here shortly. And now Commissioner Cohen will present our first proclamation this morning.
I would like to ask the following individuals to please join me at the podium. Ty Jones, President All Pro Commercial Cleaning, and Senior Coordinator Robert Pierce, Manager Carol Minor, and Senior Coordinator Jeanette Blanco from Consulting Outreach Entrepreneur Services, Hillsborough County. Good morning and welcome. This proclamation celebrates the hard work and success of small businesses. Small business is big business in Hillsborough County. As all of you know, small businesses are the engines of job creation. The recipient of today's proclamation, All Pro Commercial Cleaning, is a client of the Florida Small Business Development Center right here in Hillsborough County. In honor of these entrepreneurs and small businesses across our county, it is my pleasure to present this proclamation, which recognizes November 25th as Small Business Saturday. And I'm just going to briefly read it. Whereas according to the U.S. Small Business Administration, there are 33.2 million small businesses in the United States, representing 99% of all businesses with employees in the country. Whereas small businesses are responsible for 63% of net new jobs created between 1995 and 2021, and employ 46% of the nation's private sector workers. And whereas advocacy groups and public and private organizations across the United States, including AARP, the American Booksellers Association, American Express, and FedEx, have endorsed the Saturday After Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Whereas All Pro Commercial Cleaning Incorporated is a 34-year-old cleaning business that serves central, east-west, southwest, and south Florida areas, whose real-world knowledge, reliability, and hands-on training are vital for every stage of all commercial cleaning jobs. And whereas Ty Jones has owned this company since November 2021, All Pro Commercial Cleaning has been a client of the Florida Small Business Development Center here in Hillsborough County since August 2022. Whereas All Pro Commercial Cleaning has designed and trademarked their own mobile app, which will be launched in January 2024, and will assist the commercial industry by managing the company's quality control of the cleaning services it provides to customers in community, and more about that in a minute. Whereas Hillsborough County is dedicated to supporting and celebrating local businesses like All Pro Commercial Cleaning, who create jobs, boost the economy, and preserve neighborhoods. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare November 25th, 2023, a Small Business Saturday in Hillsborough County, and encourages residents and visitors to support small businesses and merchants on this special occasion and throughout the year. I'm going to ask Mr. Pierce to speak first, but before I do that, I just want to say to everyone, make a deliberate decision to patronize a small business on the Saturday After Thanksgiving. If everyone does just one transaction, imagine countywide what that will mean for so many different businesses all across our region. So, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you. I just wanted to congratulate Ty. Meeting Ty at one of our classes, one of our meeting classes that we teach in entrepreneurship, and he was very welcoming in receiving me and the information for the class. And just, he's been just exemplary with learning and teaching me. We, for what we do and for what we know about businesses, we learn from our clients every day. So he's taught me a whole lot, very receptive, and I really look at him as a friend as well. So congratulations.
Thank you. Would you like to? There you go. Would you like to take a picture with the board?
Sure.
Okay.
Certainly.
Absolutely. Shall we? Anything you want to say before we go?
Of course.
Yeah, go ahead.
First, I want to thank the entire Board of Commissioners. I know what you do is a very challenging responsibility, but thank you all so much for all you do, for all your districts. Thank you, sir, so much for this moment. I really genuinely appreciate it and thank all of you. On behalf of all of our customers, all of our employees throughout the state of Florida, we are indeed honored. There are so many great businesses here in Hillsborough County, so it's been chosen as indeed a dream come true and a very humbling honor. I want to thank these three because no small business can grow or evolve without a great network of support. And these three have been tremendous. I have an executive MBA in business, but I'm still learning through them because they have the expertise for this particular county that I can't get on my own. So thank all three of you for all you have done and all that you will continue to do in the future to help us grow and evolve. And lastly, I want to thank all of you and all those who may be small business owners also. Just continue to remember that you're only small if you tell yourself you're small. Function as if you're big and you'll continue to grow. Thank you again for this moment. I appreciate it.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would the following individuals please join me at the podium? Jeffrey Berger, President of the Tampa Jewish Community Centers and Foundation; John Ellis; Joe Prabasko; Gary Gold; Mark Siegel; Brian Taub; and anybody else from the JCC that would like to join me? How about that? We're batting 1,000 already. Please come on up. Good morning. Oh, for the rally. 300,000 for the march, right? Very impressive. Please come around. Come on in.
Apologies to those who weren't able to attend.
No worries. No worries. Come on, slide around me. It's okay. Don't be shy. I'm excited to have you here. Good morning and welcome. Thank you for joining us. I have the privilege of making a very important presentation today. And while I know that international issues are not typically the focus of our Board, I feel that it is important for us as leaders in our community to address these issues when the need arises. Today, innocent people in another part of the world are once again suffering cruel and indiscriminate actions, and they need our support. In solidarity with them, I would like to read the following proclamation. And before I read it, I'll just make a few comments that, in life, my father would constantly instill two things to me. One is that talk is cheap. And two is that all the time is the right time to do the right thing. The proclamation reads, whereas the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners recognizes the right of the state of Israel to exist as a sovereign and independent nation with the full rights and privileges afforded to all nations under international law. On Saturday, October 7th, 2023, a holy day of the Jewish calendar, Hamas launched a massive, unprovoked attack on the state of Israel by air, land, and sea, including the firing of thousands of rockets. Hamas terrorists crossed the land border into Israel and began slaughtering Israelis and abducting hostages, including infants, children, and the elderly. More Jewish people were murdered on October 7th, 2023 than any other single day since the Holocaust. The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners stands firmly in solidarity with the state of Israel and its efforts to safeguard its citizens, protect its borders, and ensure the safety of its people. The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners condemns the unprovoked attack by Hamas against Israel and its citizens and supports Israel's rights to defend itself and protect its citizens from indiscriminate violence and terrorism, and its right to exist as a sovereign and independent nation with the full recognition of its borders and territory. The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners condemns Hamas and Iran and calls for Hamas to immediately end the violent attacks and release all of its hostages. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare November 15th, 2023, as Supporting the State of Israel Day in Hillsborough County, and encourages residents to stand firmly in solidarity with the state of Israel. We will now present a plaque to Mr. Berger and invite you to speak. We'll get some pictures first, right over here.
Sure.
Thank you. Yes, please, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Wollstill. County Commissioners, administrator-wise, officials, friends, my name is Jeffrey Berger and as the President of the Tampa Jewish Community Centers and Federation, it is my distinct honor to accept this proclamation supporting the state of Israel on behalf of our organization, on behalf of the Jewish people in Hillsborough County, and on behalf of everyone in our community, people of all faiths who support and stand up for Israel. Commissioners, as you well know, these are perilous times for Israel and, not coincidentally, for the Jewish people in Israel, in America, around the world, and right here in our backyard. As you are aware, Israel is the only country in the entire world whose rights to defend itself, to protect its citizens, even to exist, are attacked by haters around the world. Paradoxically, that fervent opposition to Israel's very existence grew, only grew louder after this past October 7th, when Hamas terrorists invaded Israel, brutally massacring thousands of Israelis and mercilessly kidnapping hundreds more, mostly civilians, including women, children, babies, and elderly Holocaust survivors. And as we all know, the growing crescendo of anti-Israel hatred is not geographically constrained to the Middle East. Rather, that cancerous hatred also manifests itself in the increasing number of outrageous anti-Semitic attacks and incidents that are occurring everywhere, even on occasion right here in Florida. It is against this backdrop of hate and insanity that the proclamation you adopted today is so necessary and so appreciated. The Jewish community in Hillsborough County is incredibly grateful for your recognition of Israel's fundamental rights and very support for the state of Israel generally. The words of this proclamation are forceful, impactful, and tremendously strong, both in their condemnation of Hamas and Iran and in their unequivocal solidarity with Israel. But beyond the words of the proclamation itself, the mere fact that you have voluntarily stepped forward and issued the proclamation tells the Jewish community of Hillsborough County that you support and stand with us too. We recognize that in these times of high emotion, bitter polarization, and social media platforms offering outsized influence to extreme and often hateful positions, it took courage and leadership for you to issue this proclamation today. So we are so thankful to you, not only for the important message supporting Israel that is contained in the proclamation, but also for your willingness to issue the proclamation itself. Before concluding, I would ask that we observe a moment of silence in support of the hostages who are still being held captive by Hamas and in memory of the thousands of innocent people who have lost their lives in this horrific war. Since October 7th, we Jews have ended many of our public remarks with the words, "Am Yisrael Chai," the people of Israel live. And with the type of support and strength displayed today by you, the elected Board of Commissioners of Hillsborough County, we are confident that the people of Israel will continue to live for generations to come. Thank you very much, and am Yisrael Chai.
Bonnie, you want to review the changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir. We have two items that have been deferred to a later date. The first item is B5. This has been deferred to a date to be determined, which is to approve the new board policy entitled Nonprofit Funding Guidelines. Item G1 has been deferred to December 6th. This is to receive a report regarding term limits for BOCC boards and councils. We have a few corrections to the agenda or revision. A24 is to accept a fiscal year 24 state funded grant agreement with Florida Division of Emergency Management for $2.5 million for Hillsborough County Emergency Operations Center. This will, agreement will begin on the date of execution and ends on March 31st, 2027 is the correct date. Item B4 just has a new time certain. This is at 10:15. This is to approve an interlocal agreement between Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners and Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners to establish the Hillsborough-Pinnellas Workforce Development Consortium. We have several items for time certain. The first one is item D1 at 10:00 a.m. This is to conduct a public hearing to accept comments on the substantial amendments to program year 2019 and 2023 action, annual action plans, to close the public comment period, and to adopt the substantial amendments to the annual action plans. Item D2 at 10 o'clock is to conduct a public hearing to consider enactment of the proposed draft Hillsborough County Speed Zone Enforcement Ordinance, which establishes a school zone speed enforcement program in Hillsborough County. This is related to item B2. And then item B2, also at 10 o'clock, related to item D2, is to adopt a resolution establishing quasi-judicial hearing procedures and administrative costs for enforcement of the Hillsborough County School Zone Speed Detection Ordinance. Item D3 at 10 o'clock is to conduct the second public hearing and adoption of a resolution designating a brownfield area at parcel 4810 South 50th Street in Tampa. Item B4 at 10:15 is to approve an interlocal agreement between Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners and the Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners to establish the Hillsborough-Pinnellas Workforce Development Consortium and delineate the roles and responsibilities of each county. 11:45 is a recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Motion to approve the changes?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Myers, please record your vote on change of the agenda.
Motion carried six to zero.
Okay, we'll go into the public comment portion of the agenda. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the Board members, however it is requested, at the same time that your comments are not directed at staff or the Board, but rather the issues. We've set aside 45 minutes for public comment this morning. The Chair will call on speakers by name in the order in which the requests to speak have been received. When addressing the Board, please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. Up to three minutes are given for each speaker. We have four on the agenda speakers this morning, and then we have 21 off-agenda speakers, most of which are involving TECO. And I just want to again state that this issue is not under the Board's purview. We do not have any legal options to do anything at this point. And I would like our County Attorney, Christine Beck, to please confirm or anything else you'd like to say about that.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. You're absolutely correct. The state of Florida, through the Public Service Commission, has the sole and exclusive authority over rate hikes, and this Board has already expressed the constituents' concerns by, through a letter to the state. But beyond that, there really is no further power that you have in this issue.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. We're more than happy to hear your comments. We share your concerns, but just wanted to also set reasonable expectations. So the first three speakers this morning are David Coleman, and then Humerah Avzal, and then Brittany Pantin. Mr. Coleman, are you present? Okay, is it Humerah Avzal, if I'm pronouncing that right? All right, 0 for 2. Brittany Pantin, is Ms. Pantin here? Okay. Wanda Key? Ms. Key, please come forward.
Good morning. I'm here speaking on the A, item 34, the naming of the field for Jeffrey Owen Key. My name is Wanda Key. This is a bittersweet moment, but yesterday made a year in his passing, and today being honored in memory of naming of the field. First and foremost, the people behind me are family. They're not speaking, they're just here to represent. And all family and friends, could you please raise your hands, so they know that we are not alone in this? And I would like to thank Park and Rec, all County Commissioners across the Board, and especially our District III County Commissioner, Gwen Myers, Vice Chair. Like I said, it's bittersweet, but I just wanted to say thank you all for recognizing the vision that Jeff and my brother Larry had as vision, visionaries, and wanting to do more for the youth, to keep them off the street, and to have positive and stress education of becoming productive citizens in this world. So I just want to say thank you all for this honor in memory of my husband, Jeffrey O. Key.
Ms. Key, thank you very much for your comments that were coming down this morning. Okay, the next three speakers are Brooke Ward, followed by Stephen Kaufman, and then Good morning.
Well, good morning. Hi, everyone. My name is Brooke Ward, Senior Florida Organizer with Food and Water Watch, and I'm here today with the Coalition fighting for affordable energy here in Florida. We know that this Board does not set rates, but there's a lot that this Board can do to help alleviate the energy burden on Hillsborough County residents. I sent an email yesterday to the entire Board so that, because this is kind of an in-the-weeds ask that we're giving you, but it's pretty simple what we're asking for. Every four years, the utilities go to the PSC, and they ask for their base rate for the next four years. That process will be starting for Tampa Electric next year. And this year, prior to that process starting, they have sent a petition to the Public Service Commission. In that petition, they are asking to shortcut the process of setting the rates. In doing so, that will put a heavier energy burden on the residential customers, who already have one of the highest energy burdens in the entire country when it comes to their class as being more heavily burdened than commercial or industrial. So we're asking that this Board, at the minimum, join the hundreds of Hillsborough County residents in opposing that petition and making sure that Tampa Electric has a fair and balanced cost of service study when they go to set next year's rates. So you can send a letter as public comment. Other governmental bodies do this as well, and I sent the link in that email. So we would love for you to do that. The second thing that we could, that you could do in helping with this process is becoming a formal party in the rate hikes hearings in order to ensure that Hillsborough County residents have representation in those hearings. And so this Board is able to also interfere, intervene as a party, and be part of that process. So those are two things that you legally can, and we are asking you to, do. At the end of the day, we hope that this Board goes the next step further and starts working with Tampa Electric and with the people in Hillsborough County to set an affordable energy plan that will help to phase back expensive dirty fossil fuels, help to increase energy efficiency in neighborhoods, and help to alleviate the energy burden that is drowning Hillsborough residents. Housing is unaffordable, and the energy burden makes it that much worse. So please, join the hundreds of Hillsborough County residents who are opposing TECO's petition to shortcut the rate process and immediately start drafting an affordable energy plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Stephen Kaufman, followed by Rodney Johnson and Ashton Maddox. Good morning, sir.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. I would underline what you just heard, share my comments. My name is Steve Kaufman. I'm here as a part of the League of Women Voters, but also just a concerned citizen of Hillsborough County. We are a part of what we call a rate hike coalition. We're asking not only for you to take a look at, at TECO, but to look at an affordable energy plan for the future. Specifically, though, I'm here to ask you to protect Hillsborough residents from further TECO rate hikes and to move the utility off its reliance on fossil fuels. It is very frustrating to hear you say that there is nothing you can do. I appreciate that this is something you are not directly involved with, but it is frustrating to think that our County Commissioners have nothing to say about a utility that provides the, the majority of power to our citizens. You have the power of voice, you can testify, as we have, and I ask you for that support. Those who are most vulnerable are being asked to pay higher rates, and now TECO apparently wants to go around those residents who might be concerned and look to, to their commercial customers and avoid discussion of how the rates may affect our residents. TECO, I think, needs to hear from all of us. I want to remind you that the coalition I refer to is, is broad and deep. There are people of faith, there are people who are committed to the environment, there are those of us with the League of Women Voters who are most concerned about the ability of our constituency to, to exercise democracy. And I think all of you can agree that that's an important goal. So please, won't you please join us? Hundreds of Hillsborough- So please, won't you please join us, hundreds of Hillsborough County residents, and oppose TECO's rate hike petition specifically, and then help us? Help us to develop an affordable energy plan that we all can live with. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Rodney Johnson, followed by Ashton Maddox, and then Brittany Silveira. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. How y'all doing today? My name is Rodney Johnson. I'm a community organizer with Florida Rising, and my concern is the people. I don't I didn't come today with stats or quotes or anything, but I'm one of the biggest I would like to thank I'm one of the biggest community organizers that canvassed in Hillsborough County today. I would think I was in the top five, if you ask me. I've been doing this work for like five and a half years, so my comments are not political at all. It's coming from the people that I canvass with, and I go from South Tampa to University to Brandon to the interstate, and I've been doing it for five and a half years now. So my comments I'm getting from them is that this is too high. Can't we can't afford it. They're making life decisions. Should I pay for my medicine, or should I keep a light on in the house? And I don't know what you can or cannot do. I just hope that you put profit over people and care in your heart and the community on your mind. Once again, I'm Rodney Johnson, community organizer of Florida Rising. I look forward to working with you guys and making our community a better place, but that's up to y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ashton Maddox. Ashton Maddox, followed by Brittany Silveira, and then Emma D. Abreu. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Ashton Maddox, and I'm here on behalf of the Hillsborough Rate Hikes Coalition. I'm here to speak to you all regarding the rate hikes that have fallen upon Hillsborough County. And as many of us are well aware, this past summer was the hottest summer on record with 44 consecutive days of weather over 90 degrees. As a young adult, I am still in college, and I am trying to not only make a career in this city, but also a life. And rising temperatures play a crucial role in that. If not for the heat, my time this past summer could have been filled with the parks and beaches that our city is known for. But instead, it was spent indoors, escaping the sun and its warmth. This wasn't a perfect escape, as this too has its downside because of these increasingly high rate hikes. As a student with also a minimum wage job, this is greatly impacting my livelihood, as it now takes more energy and thus more money for me to keep my small on-campus apartment cool. And thus in turn, makes me even more reliant on TECO and their high rates. With all this in mind, we as a coalition urge the Hillsborough County Commission to join the hundreds of Hillsborough County residents opposing TECO's petition to shortcut the rate process and immediately start drafting an affordable energy plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maddox. Brittany Silveira, then Emma D. Abreu, and then Cynthia Kowitsky. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Brittany Silveira. I'm a GenClio Organizer at USF and also a member of the Tampa Bay Affordable Energy Coalition. Six days ago, the PSC approved another monthly rate hike of $3.77, on top of the already 62% increase we've experienced in the past four years. While $3.77 may not seem like a lot to you, in Hillsborough County, where a recent study by United Way Suncoast showed that two out of five residents cannot afford basic needs like food, housing, and healthcare, $3.77 is far too much. That is one gallon of fuel for your car, which can make or break your ability to get to work. That is a pack of pencils for your child to be able to get their schoolwork done. That is a drink of water on a scorching hot day, and so much more. The issue is deeper than these $3 alone. It lies in the indiscriminate manner by which these utility monopolies like TECO can uproot our entire lives without facing any consequences. With that said, as you've heard from our coalition, TECO is once again trying to raise these rates by avoiding a full cost of service study. We, the residential customers, should they avoid the study, will be stuck with a disproportionately high energy burden compared to their industrial and commercial users, which consume the most and pollute the most. Whether you believe in a transition to clean energy or not, I urge you to believe in the needs of your constituents, and what we need is affordable energy and an affordable energy plan now. Commissioners, please intervene on our behalf and represent your people's needs. Demand that the Public Service Commission require TECO's full cost of service study in their 2024 rate decision hearing. We have until January 10th to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silveira. Emma D. Abreu, I apologize for mispronouncing your name. Cynthia Kowitsky, and then Donald Hampton. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Emma, and I'm an intern with GenClio at USF, an organization representing over 900 community members. And I'm here on behalf of the Tampa Rate Hikes Coalition to call into my commissioners for a transition to clean energy in a comprehensive climate action plan in Hillsborough County. The families of Hillsborough cannot bear the burden of increased energy costs. These are the same people disproportionately impacted by the climate crisis that lack access to affordable, energy-efficient appliances here in Tampa, exacerbating the cost burden on the most vulnerable. At a time where people have to prioritize what is most necessary for them to survive, whether they can afford to go to the doctor this year, or if they need to prioritize their rent first, I've heard this story far too many times from my community, my classmates, and my friends. What residents want is a healthy, clean environment to live in and reliable energy that will not sabotage their ability to live and be financially stable, not rate hikes from the same fuels destroying the planet. We urge the Hillsborough County Commission to join hundreds of Hillsborough County residents opposing TECO's petition to shortcut the rate process and immediately start drafting an affordable energy plan. We ask you to submit a public comment to the PSC, asking them to require TECO to complete a full and balanced cost of balanced cost of service study during their 2024 rate decision hearing. Thank you all for your time and your thoughts.
Thank you for your comments. Cynthia Kowitsky, followed by Donald Hampton, then Adrian Reyes Alzate. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Cynthia Kowitsky, and I am a sophomore studying environmental science at the University of South Florida. I'm here today because I am concerned about skyrocketing utility bills. As someone deeply immersed in the study of sustainability, I am aware of the profound impact that energy-related decisions can have on our local ecosystems and the well-being of our community. The concerns I am expressing today are not only driven by my personal convictions as a resident, but are also rooted in my academic understanding of the balance between human activities and the environment. Our country, like many others, faces the challenge of transitioning to sustainable and affordable energy sources. This is not merely a theoretical concept for me. It is a focal point of my academics and a matter that holds considerable weight in shaping the future I am preparing to contribute to. I join the growing chorus of voices within our community who are opposed to TECO's petition due to TECO's lack of consideration for the long-term impacts on our environment and the affordability of residents of energy for residents. It is imperative that Hillsborough County Commission take a stance against TECO's petition and advocate for a thorough and transparent process that includes the input of residents who will be directly affected. We urge the Hillsborough County Commission to join the hundreds of county residents opposing TECO's petition to shortcut the rate process and immediately start drafting an affordable energy plan now. Thank you.
Thank you. Donald Hampton, followed by Adrian Reyes Alzate, and then a Rico Smith. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioner. My name is Donald Hampton. I'm from Y-Mama. I'm part of the Y-Mama Community Action Task Force that we have, and I'm here to support our community benefits. And I want to again invite you down to speak with us in our next December meeting by contacting Gil Martinez of the CDC of Y-Mama. I know you have the community benefits coming up, some discussion. We'd like to meet with you and talk about what's going on in Y-Mama, the Y-Mama Village, Comprehensive Plan, and things of that nature. Also, I know there've been comments made about it's only been seven of us, and how do the seven of us have so much influence over all the other people in Y-Mama? We get out in the streets, we talk to people, grocery stores, community meetings, at their houses. And the thing, when I heard that, and I was sick, and I wasn't able to make it, earlier this month, to talk to you about it, is that we have seven people here who are commissioners, and you responsible for 1.5 million people. That should be a concern, not just seven people, over 10, 11,000 people. Secondly, my GPS today said it was going to take me 36 minutes to get here. I left 45 minutes earlier than that and thought I was going to get here at 8:30. Well, guess what? It took me hour and five minutes to get here. I know you have proposals to build additional roadways, but the way we building and all these cars that we adding and other people that we adding to the to this, our great county of Hillsborough County, why don't you think of Light Railway? I'm 71 years old, I've been tired of driving that hour into time. I want to be able to get on the train in 10 minutes and get here to see you on time because I missed you. I was sick, had COVID. So, and I want to know, are we getting money from the Biden administration for Build Back Better? And if we're not, why not? Who's supposed to write those grants? I don't ever see that in the information when I'm reading it. Thirdly, I did miss the meeting on affordable housing. I don't like that word, affordable. What is affordable? The meetings I go to, I hear 300,000. Listening to this group here today talk about utilities and everything else, maybe that affordable housing that we building is 100. Yes, do we have programs, and I'm sure you folks have worked with us on programs and how whether it's Section 8 or other federal assistance to help us out so that people can afford the housing. But the thing that I look at, when you cut that 8 million, that was one mile of road. That was it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hampton. Appreciate your comments. We've got an Adrian, and then a Rico Smith, and a Cameron Pressy, who's virtual. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Adrian Reyes, and I'm here on behalf of the Tampa Rate Hikes Coalition to call my commissioners for a transition to clean energy and a comprehensive climate action plan. As a student phasing into the real-world responsibilities of life, the recent surge in utility rates has actually affected my life, as it's posed an unexpected challenge to my college experience and also just my budget in general. As Hillsborough County Commissioners, you have the responsibility and the power to hold TECO accountable for the interests of your constituents. Residential customers would get struck with a higher energy burden than industrial and commercial consumers in the absence of the standard cost of service study. Whether you believe in a transition to clean energy or not, I urge you to believe in the needs of your constituents. We don't need to be burdened by the rising costs of dirty energy, but rather affordable energy plan rooted in the needs of the community. The County Commission has an opportunity to protect Hillsborough families by intervening the next TECO base rate hearing, and this is your opportunity to do so. We would like to call on the commissioners to intervene in TECO's request to avoid a cost of service study. As you know, Hillsborough County residents will be burdened with an unjust distribution of energy cost as a result of this. The Public Service Commission is planning to decide on whether the study will be conducted or not on January 10th. We urge the commissioners to protect their people and demand a cost of service study. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Rico Smith, then followed by Cameron Pressy, Leila Liliquist, both online. Good morning, sir.
Hey, good morning. Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be back here today. My name is Rico Smith. I am a proud resident, and I'm a candidate for Hillsborough County Commission, District Six, countywide. First off, I'd like to congratulate Commissioner Owen as the new Vice Chair. I pray that your guidance will help continue to steer this board down the right path. Today, I find it relevant that we address the concern in our community, our small businesses. I want to thank Commissioner Cohen for highlighting Small Business Saturday. I talk to local business owners every day, and they share many of the concerns about the direction that our community is headed in. The recent heart-wrenching events in Ebor City brought this into sharp focus. In the wake of this tragedy, it was disheartening to see local businesses being singled out. Amidst the grief and the frustration, a vocal minority has pushed for increased red tape, which is unfairly going to impact the very businesses that form the heartbeat of not only this county, but Ebor City. This incident is not just about Ebor City, it reflects a broader issue that we, as a county, need to address with understanding and in supporting our local businesses. As a county, we need to work harder at being more business-friendly, not less. Our goal should be to turn Hillsborough County into a hub, far and wide it should be known as the epicenter of innovation and thriving small businesses here in Florida. Since inception, the community investment tax has brought in over $2.6 billion. Let's consider allocating a portion of those funds to truly embrace our growing small businesses here in this county. Imagine the impact we can make by encouraging county departments to shop from local small businesses, or by creating a fund that offers low-interest loans to those who traditionally would not be able to get normal funding. I get it, our county has a ton of choices, right, when it comes to where we spend our money and how, and there's only so much to go around. But let's not forget that small businesses are the backbone of our community, and they're key to our success. They're also the residents of this county that we serve. We've got a solid start already, so let's please continue to support our small businesses, and together we can bring sound leadership, good policy, and thriving communities back to Hillsborough County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Our next several speakers are virtual. Cameron Pressy.
Mr. Chair, Cameron Pressy did not check into the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Leila Liliquist.
Leila, go ahead. Leila Liliquist, can you hear us?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, you can.
Okay, good. Good morning, County Commissioner. My name is Leila Liliquist. I live in Brandon. On October the 25th, 23, myself and three fellow concerned citizens met with our County Commissioner as requested. The Director of Library Services, Deputy County Administrator of Hillsborough County, and Mr. Valdez, Director of Parks and Rec, and Dave Bond from Veterans Park 301 in Tampa were also present. Our County Commissioner started the meeting, our County Commissioner started the meeting by being confused, not knowing what we were doing there. Our meeting was scheduled to discuss concerns about the new library in the Oak Tree Canopy. Then she addressed me directly and stated, "I will shut you down if you speak about saving the Oak Tree Park or not having the new library in Brandon." This is both her hands uplifted, her palms faced at me as well. That is, my freedom of speech was basically being taken away. The Deputy Administrator said he would put in writing that the canopy of oak trees would remain. He offered one bench and a gazebo, starting and stating that a memorial park would require too much infrastructure. He also agreed to not put Stacy White's name on the new library. The library director has not maintained our current library, leaving our lake covered with algae for the past few years. The building itself has been left unattended, no basic maintenance, mold growing on the building, and lack of paint. A recent article entitled "Why Parking Lots Are So Ugly," the writer David "Dunn" Rankin states, "Our view is unattractive. When we drive down our busy thoroughfares, the main streets of our communities, one large reason for the unappealing view is that is what borders the road, dreadful-looking parking lots. With 175 parking spaces planned for our new library, it will look like a used car lot." Remember Paid Paradise and Put Up a Parking Lot by Joni Mitchell? That's what we're doing. In closing, from the letter of the day, Campus Tribune, 11/615, when writer Lynn Barnhart stated, "No one is served by an intractable politician." I don't know about anyone else, but I want my elected officials to constantly strive to become more educated and informed in all the important issues affecting our community and the world around us, especially if that results in a change in their original position on a particular issue. This vote for the new library was approved by the County Commission on November 16, 22, for the benefit of one County Commissioner leaving office. This County Commission who took, this same County Commission who took $500 million out of our transportation needs. We do not trust anything about this vote. No, our community plan leaves our, no to that vote. Our community plan leaves our green spaces alone. And as Winston Churchill Hill said, "I will never, ever, ever give up." We need to save our Oak Tree Park and our green spaces at Winston and Parsons. Thank you very much.
Nikki Henderson, virtual.
Can you go ahead? Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Listen again. Okay, hi, everyone. Yeah, please bear with me, I'm a little under the weather, so my voice, I don't have, my voice is a little gone. But anyway, I wanted to speak on my recent experience meeting with one of the commissioners. The meeting was in regards to the project for the new Brandon library. First off, I would like to thank whoever took the additional phases out of the project, as we do appreciate that. As, I don't want to mention any names, but they know who they are. I felt the tone from this individual was very condescending and demeaning. I get your time is valuable, but so is ours, except you're getting paid and we're not. We just feel that a people's voice should be heard, and it definitely doesn't feel that way, especially with the mockery that just placed in this meeting. The main argument with why they felt the project should move forward was the community gathering space. However, there is plenty of room at the current library to add this space. Like previously discussed, most of the shelves are empty, which means you can consolidate all the books to the first floor, so remodel the second floor to have the space you're claiming we need. Also, with the current eBooks stats, where almost 5 million more eBooks are being checked out, and that many less people attending the actual libraries in Hillsborough County since 2018, and these stats will continue to rise. I get we have a certain budget for libraries. However, instead of investing that money into contractors, maybe we can start adding more community outreach programs while maintaining our current green space. At the end of the day, I felt our meetings with the commissioner were a waste of our time, and they were already predetermined not to consider our voice. I volunteer at Fort Bend to a quote with Ms. Leila, and you guys don't see how hard she works for our community. I am grateful that we have someone like her to represent our community by trying to do the right thing, as each of you should. So, thank you, Ms. Leila, for all you do, day in and day out, to make our community a better place. Even though the meeting came off as a way to shut us down, as it only fueled the fire more by wanting us to investigate what is truly going on here in our county. How things currently are is not what our founding fathers wanted. So, let's please get back to this. Thank you.
Austin Zane, virtual.
Good morning, County Commissioners. I hope you're all having a good day. I would like to bring something to the attention of everybody, and the term affordability has been thrown around a bunch in terms of housing and electric and energy efficiency. But I would like to say that it's not an affordability issue we're dealing with. We're dealing with a greed issue. I find that we need, Hillsborough County, I've been attending the future land use meetings for Hillsborough County, and the plan is out of date, and it has not been put into effect yet. We are still rushing to build as many buildings as we can to fit into according to the last plan. I believe, and I would propose that we do follow the pursuit of Doral City in Florida, who put a moratorium on all new buildings that would fall under the Live Local Act until they could get a grasp on the situation and adjust their own future land use meeting plan accordingly to deal with the issues that have arisen from the Live Local Act. Plant City, the residents are losing it, people are losing it with all of what's going on, the rapid transformation. And Plant City and Walden Lake is a good example of the Live Local Act intruding upon the citizens of Hillsborough County's rights and voices. This is one among many other properties and developments that have been in the works. I feel like we have a greed issue because there's enough housing, according to the land use meeting plans that I've been to. We have enough housing currently built to accommodate for an additional 500,000-plus people. So, the issue isn't a lack of housing, it's a lack of housing that people can afford. So, yes, affordability, but it's a greed issue because the rents keep going up and up and up, the rates keep going up and up and up. We need to put a curb on this. I know people are afraid of a rent control, but we need some form of a rent control on these apartments and these places that people are looking to move into but simply can't afford because it's thousands of dollars, hundreds of dollars out of their budget.
All right, thank you, Mr. Zane. Philip, oh, Jesus. You have 22 seconds. Okay, Philip Barfield, virtual.
Philip did not check into the meeting.
All right, thank you. Peyton Hoey, followed by Robin Lockett. Good morning.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning. My name is Peyton Hoey, and I am the Gen Cleo Lead Organizer here in Tampa. We represent nearly 900 student voices at the University of South Florida and thousands statewide. Together, we are joined by a diverse coalition of organizations and community members representing over 12,000 people in Hillsborough County frustrated by energy burden. Florida already grapples with being one of the most unaffordable states due to soaring property insurance rates, inflated housing costs, and rising rents, and low wages that are remaining the same as these costs are going up. On top of that, monopolies like FPL, Duke Energy, and TECO are relentlessly driving up utility prices and profit margins, leading to financial strain on working-class families and communities across the state, particularly in low-income and communities of color. As Hillsborough County Commissioners, it is your responsibility to hold TECO accountable to the interests of the people you serve. As TECO's stipulation agreement approaches to determine the cost of rates for the next four years, TECO has filed a petition to avoid the standard cost of service study. By doing so, residential customers would get stuck with a higher energy burden than industrial and consumer customers. TECO residential customers already pay some of the highest electric bills in the entire nation. This county commission has an opportunity to protect Hillsborough families by intervening in the next TECO base rate hike hearing, and this is your first opportunity to do so. We urge this commission to join the hundreds of Hillsborough County residents opposing TECO's petition to shortcut the rate process and immediately start drafting an affordable energy plan. Lastly, I come to you as a community member here today, and I want to ask you, where was your proclamation for the Palestinian lives lost? Tampa has one of the largest Palestinian communities in Florida, with countless families that I know impacted by the tragedy in Gaza, including cherished Palestinian small businesses and a giant community that have expressed explicitly the need for support at this time. Your silence on the scale of tragedy and Palestinian lives lost is deafening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Robin Lockett, then Arlene Washington, and then Tawana Crawford.
Good morning, Council. My name is Robin Lockett. I'm the Regional Director of Florida Rising. I'm here in support of the Tampa Rate Hike Coalition. We sit at that table, and we support them. Community comes down here, and they pour their heart out to the commission, just looking for a tug of somebody showing some type of empathy. I listened, and I heard this morning that you guys did your due diligence in regards to submitting a letter, but is there more you can do? Housing was different because a lot of people owned homes, and they weren't affected by rent. But the electric bill, the electricity going up, everybody's affected by that. So, I'm quite sure unless you have a deal with whoever, your light bills are going up too. So, when the community is coming down, do you have the will to do something extra, although you've done the basis? Do you have the will to do so? That's all they're asking. It's not election time for you guys, I don't think, a few, but, you know, just push out the will to do something extra to assist in this. It's influence. If you have the influence to do something, and your community, the community, and even if your people are not coming down, who you represent, because I've heard in regards to housing, you're representing your people, all seven of you guys represent everybody. You represent everybody because you make a vote on everything. So, you impact somebody's life one way or the other. So, with this, they're just asking you to push forward and do something additional. It's in your power to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lockett. Arlene Washington, followed by Tawana Crawford.
My name is Arlene Washington. I'm a 79-year-old senior who lives in a building with a lot of other seniors. And this summer, we all had a hard time keeping the air condition on, and it was quite hot, and it was between the air condition, food, or your medicine. And it was a hard time for all of us. And I know you guys can do something to help us out because we need that. And on a fixed income, when your utilities goes up to $100 a month, that's a little hard for us. So, we need your help. And a lot of us sat with no air condition on, with fans, and it was quite hot. And that means we had to go in the hallways to get air to live, to function, and a lot of us passed out, and a lot of us ended up in the hospital. So, I know you guys can do something to help us out because we're asking that right now. Thank you much, and you have a wonderful day.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. We've got Tawana Crawford, followed by David Sinclair, and then the last speaker will Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Tawana Crawford, and I'm coming to speak on to TECO about the electricity bill. Just last month, my utility was turned off for three days after I made a payment on a once-a-month income. And then when I called the office, I was told that I was taken off the 65-plus program, had no knowledge of that, but my charge paid what I was supposed to pay to get my utility turned back on. Right after they get turned back on, then I called back to TECO office. They tell me by the 27th of this month that I gotta pay another $300 and something. Now, I don't understand what's going on. I speak for me and all other disabled people that's trying to make, do what they have as far as the first, I get a once-a-month income on the 3rd of the month. I go pay TECO what I get the bill for in the mailbox, but then when I pay that, you're coming back at me with something else. Can somebody please help me understand what's going on and take initiative to look at those that's on a once-a-month income and work out some kind of plan, payment plan with me and those that's on a once-a-month income? Please, and thank you, and thank you for letting me share.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. Bonnie, if we could have someone meet with Ms. Crawford and see if there's any assistance we can provide.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. David Sinclair, and the last speaker is Yen Yu Chen. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is David Sinclair. I'm with LULAC, the League of United Latin American Citizens, and with Florida Rising. I hope this does not become an echo chamber. 21 persons with the same message, but with each of us are individuals with a heart. I look from the back. I hope that we're all listening because I often see heads down. But each of us have a message. Why am I here? I'm here to protect county residents from the hikes, the painful hikes of electric bills that we have. I'm also here to ask you to intervene in the next Tampa Electric Rate Base Hearing before the Florida Public Service Committee. As many have said, you can intervene in the Public Service Commission rate hike hearings. Specifically, I ask you to join the many county residents who are opposing TECO's petition to the Public Service Commission. TECO is trying to shortcut the next base rate hearing. And very specifically, submit a public comment to the Public Service Commission, asking them to require TECO to complete a full and balanced cost of service study during their next 2024 rate decision hearing. Just a public comment to the Public Service Commission to require that TECO complete a full and balanced cost of service study. That is what we're asking. Each of us have a voice, each of us have a petition. We care for you. Otherwise, we would not have come a distance. It is our passion to each of you. Thank you for looking at us as we speak to you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Last speaker this morning, Yen Yu Chen. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Yen Ru Chen. I'm an international student with Gen Cleo at USF, and I stand before you today with a concern that affects me and resonate with many others in our diverse community. As someone pursuing education in a foreign country, the recent surge in utility rates has added an unexpected challenge to my journey. A 62% increase over the past four years is disheartening, especially when the cost of living, education, and necessity is already a considerable burden for students like me. Tampa Electric relies on fossil fuels with the projections that frig gas will contribute to 78.1% of the utility energy generation by 2032, raises a significant environmental and financial concern. As an international student, navigating these issues adds another dimension to the complexity of adapting to life in the United States. The additional strength on utility bills directly impacts our ability to manage the cost of being an international student. We urge the Hillsborough County Commission to recognize the unique challenge the broader committee faces. Please join the resident opposing TECO petitions to expedite the rate process and submitting a comment to the PSC for clarity. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. That closes the public comment portion of the agenda. Commissioner Kemp, you recognized?
Thank you. I just want to say, and I missed the comments made by Ms. Beck and the chair this morning, but, you know, I know, there is, there's not time to put to agenda the item that you're asking for and vote for it because our next meeting is December 6, and this deadline is December 5. And the first I heard about it was yesterday, but I want to make a personal commitment to, I'll do my own letter, and any board member could do their own letter, asking, requesting before the PSC for a full and balanced cost of service study. I think it's a point well taken, but we have not, any item would have to be agendted and passed, and we don't have a meeting scheduled until after that deadline. So, I will personally do that. I'm sure there are some other commissioners that will as well.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cohen?
Yeah, thank you for that, Commissioner Kemp. I also committed to do that, and I will do that on my personal letterhead from my office.
All right, thank you. Can we have a motion to approve the consent?
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Kemp, second, Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote on the consent agenda.
Motion carried 7 to 0.
All right, Bonnie, introduce the first time cert.
Yes, the first public hearing is Item D1. This is regarding the annual action plan for fiscal plan year 2019 and 2023. Brenda Brackens with Affordable Housing will present this item. There is one person that has been, has signed up to speak for this public hearing.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Brenda Brackens, and I'm the interim Affordable Housing Director. We're here to present Item D1 in order to conduct a public hearing to accept comments on the substantial amendments to Program Year 2019 and Program Year 2023 action plans and to close the public comment period that began on October 4, 2023, and to adopt the substantial amendments to the annual action plans for Program Year 2019 and Program Year 2023 for the Submittal to HUD, which is the Department of Housing and Urban Development. This is a requirement of HUD for entitlement areas receiving CDBG or Community Development Block Grant funding. The substantial The substantial amendment includes funding year and budget adjustments for current projects and reallocation of federal funding from previous action plan years. This action will allow HUD, or allow us, the staff, to reconcile the HUD IDIS system and to expend earliest received grant dollars and program income. All projects in the action plan and the substantial amendments were selected, selected through a competitive RFP process. This substantial amendment would allow the county to expend $1,880,517 in CDBG funding. This is a public hearing.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. I know one individual had signed up virtually. Is there a Tia Babu?
She did not sign up.
She did not sign up, okay. Has anyone here wish to speak to Item D1? Not, can we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Cohen, second, Commissioner Myers. No comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Thank you. The next item is Item D2. This is to conduct a public hearing to consider the enactment of the Hillsborough County School Speed Zone Enforcement Ordinance. Whitney Green with the County Attorney's Office will start out presenting this item, but we have several folks here. We have several folks from the Sheriff's Office, as well as from the school district, and Whitney can introduce each one as they may speak.
Thank you, Bonnie. Good morning, Commissioners. Whitney Green, Assistant County Attorney. This ordinance establishes a school zone speed enforcement program in Hillsborough County pursuant to state law by authorizing the use of speed detection systems within the county, enabling the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office to seek appropriate vendors to place and install the necessary equipment and requiring BOCC approval of vendor agreements. The ordinance also provides for program implementation and enforcement of violations that occur within the school zones that are designated in the ordinance and for annual reporting on the program. To comply with state law, the Sheriff's Office has provided the board with data and evidence establishing a heightened safety risk in certain school zones that warrant additional enforcement measures. That data, which identifies the 29 school zones listed in the ordinance, has been included with the backup for today's agenda item and incorporated by reference into the ordinance, and additional school zones could be added in the future via amendment. Here today with me are representatives from the Sheriff's Office, including Assistant General Counsel Chris Brown and Chief Thomas St. John, who are present to speak to their data collection efforts and the sheriff's role in this program. Also present is Kristin Davis, Superintendent of Government Affairs for the school district, who will say just a few words on behalf of the district.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. Christopher Brown, on behalf of the Sheriff's Office Legal Counsel. It's a pleasure to be here. It's been a long time since I've been in front of the board. We are here to promote and encourage the BOCC to pass this ordinance. We are here to assist. It has been a pleasure to work with the County Attorney's Office, Whitney Green, and Deborah Cromarty-Mincy on this ordinance. This particular statute, the way this statute was passed, is fairly complicated, so it has required a fairly complicated ordinance, but I think we've done a good job of getting there. I do have with me Chief Thomas St. John, Sergeant Tracy Reeves, Sergeant Donald Reiser, and PIO Amanda Granite. We are here to answer any questions you might have. One of the questions I've understood you might have is about the contract. We do not have a contract yet. We can't put out a bid for an RFP until this ordinance is passed, so those types of questions we wouldn't really be able to answer yet, but our plan would be, once this ordinance passes, if it does, to put out that bid. I do have, pursuant to statutory authorities and the way that a typical RFP would run, I do have Chief Thomas St. John to address some specifics with you.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. On behalf of the Sheriff of Conister, thank you. Thank you for your dedication to protecting our children, our families, and our school crossing guards at over 300 school crossings throughout the county. It's because of your support that Sheriff Conister is really excited to bring this program to our communities to help slow down traffic in our most vulnerable and precious areas, our schools. As you saw from the studies you received, you know, it was a three-day study that was conducted at 29 schools, and the results were pretty staggering. There were 25,000 violations in excess of 10 miles an hour or more over the speed limit. So we really feel strongly that this would be a great force multiplier for us as an agency to help slow down that traffic during those times to and from school, protecting the safety of our children and the welfare of everybody in around the schools. So thank you again for considering this, and thank you for the opportunity today to be here.
Thank you, sir. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. Kristin Davis, Assistant Superintendent of Government Affairs for Hillsborough County Public Schools. Just want to say thank you. I'm honored to be here on behalf of our board. And Superintendent Van Ayers, thank you for supporting our students, our families, especially prioritizing, prioritizing the safety of our community, especially around our schools. So we look forward to working with you, your team, the Sheriff's Office, on next steps on implementation, and just wanted to say thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
And as Chris said, this was a team effort, so I also just want to acknowledge staff in Veterans and Consumer Services Department and the Public Works Department who helped us in this effort. The board authorized scheduling and advertising this public hearing at your last board meeting, and all associated legal advertising requirements have been met. The statutorily required business impact estimate, which also was presented to you at your last meeting, was timely posted on the county's website. And before I conclude, we have identified one scrupulous error to correct in the draft ordinance on page four, line 154. The citation to Florida statute, Section 316.003, subsection 82, should read subsection 83. And with that, I'm available along with the Sheriff's Office representatives if you have any questions.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. I know two individuals have signed up, one's virtual.
Hi, Commissioners. Good morning. My name is Sarah Couture. Today, I'm speaking in both my capacity as a resident of Hillsborough County and as the Board of State Director of the Fines and Fees Justice Center. Sorry I was unable to join you in person today, and I thank you for the ability to participate over the phone. Effective traffic enforcement should be about creating safer streets, changing unsafe driving behavior, and removing serious offenders from the road. After years of using fine-based enforcement as the primary tool to address road safety, jurisdictions are no closer to the goal of reaching zero fatalities or creating safer streets. In fact, many jurisdictions are currently operating more automated traffic enforcement tools than ever before, but traffic fatalities continue to increase. This is because fine-based enforcement does not fix bad design, lack of infrastructure, or poor engineering. I'm speaking today, for reasons I will provide further, to oppose this ordinance that would allow for the installation of speed cameras in 29 school zones in Hillsborough County. The first issue I would like to raise is specific to the language used in both the subject Florida statute and the proposed ordinance that references regularly scheduled when referring to times. The term regularly scheduled is not defined in the definition section of Chapter 316, nor in the proposed ordinance. How will the system know when regular times are? How does the computer have to be programmed to the individual school's times? What about early release days? How is the public supposed to know what regularly scheduled hours are? Every driver in Hillsborough County does not have children, so those who do not are unfamiliar with school hours in general, much less what the term regularly scheduled includes and excludes. How are any adjusted times going to be communicated to the public? An additional issue is that the Florida State statute provides for notice to the registered owner of the subject vehicle, not the driver at the time of the infraction. The registered owner may not have been driving the vehicle when the speed camera catches an infraction. An example would be, when I was a teenager, I know that my vehicle was registered under my parents' names, so if I was driving the vehicle and speeding through a school zone, then my parents would receive the citation and the moving violation points, not me. How will situations like that be handled? Another concern I have is that I don't see anything in the ordinance that requires regular maintenance and assessment of whether cameras are working correctly. As we all know, technology falters all the time and can be inaccurate, which this would cause tickets to be issued incorrectly, as has happened in other jurisdictions, resulting in class actions being brought, like is currently happening in Buffalo, New York, and other cities in the past.
Thank you, Ms. Couture. I appreciate your comments.
Mouth-onneering cameras can set the county up-
Thank you, ma'am. Is there Hassan DeBaja here? Good morning.
Good morning, Honorable Chair. Okay, excellent, thank you. Esteemed Commissioners, thank you so much. My name is Hassan DeBaja. I'm here on behalf of Genoptik Smart Mobility Solutions. We're based here in Jupiter, Florida. We applaud you for making the decision to move forward with the school zone speed program and protecting our children, crossguards, and the loved ones. And also here to hopefully ask the Sheriff's Office to seriously consider going to the RFP process and bidding, and hearing them earlier say that there is no reason for me to be here. Just kidding. Very appreciative of that opportunity, simply because there is new technology, there is new, more effective technology, rather than piggybacking off of other contracts and sole source. So hearing from the Sheriff's Office this morning that there will be a bidding process definitely is the right thing to do, and for selecting the right partner. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. At the close of the public comment portion, Commissioner Owen, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And first, I want to commend all three different departments for working so well together. Our Sheriff's Department, obviously Whitney and her rock stars here, and I always call them rock stars because that's what they are, and as well as the school board. So I think this is a really, really important ordinance that's going to be put in place to address what the woman that called in. There is going to be a human element to this. I don't know, Chief, if maybe if you want to come back up here and address that. There will be an ability to challenge a ticket and a human element portion of this if it needs to be challenged. Could you touch on that real quick?
Yes, 100%. You, part of the process is the citations will be reviewed. It has to be verified that the vehicle matches the tag, that the vehicle is in the crossing at the time the equipment is activated during the school's in session. It'll be a multi-step process before that's even sent out.
And the notice, there's going to be notice to the public, too, with signage stating that there's going to be a 30-minute, is my understanding, 30 minutes, 30, not 30 minutes, 30 days before they actually start getting ticketed, so-
Yes, sir. There'll be a 30-day grace period with a public awareness piece that will let the entire community know what's going on and when it's going to happen.
Yeah, great. And we've done all of our due diligence. Appreciate all your hard work on this because we wanted to make sure we were fully in compliance with that statute and getting all the evidence together, and I want to thank you all. And I also want to state, I think I can speak on behalf of the board, that our prayers are with Deputy Santos and Brito. We really, they are, they are heroes to us in this community and have shown us a lot about restraint and how heroic the officers here in Hillsborough County. Can you give any update on how they're doing, or is that-
They're both doing well. You know, they're progressing and in good spirits, both, and they both have a long road ahead of them for recovery, so thank you.
Our prayers are with them. Yeah, okay. And so, Mr. Chairman, right now, are we moving to adopt a resolution or, because I know that's B2, so I don't want to-
We'll do the ordinance right now.
All right, move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve the ordinance establishing the school zone speed enforcement program by Commissioner Owen, second, Commissioner Kemp, Commissioner Winstall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I don't, I don't know who wants to speak to this, but I'll offer you a quote that makes, the one thing that makes me nervous on this, from Benjamin Franklin, which is, you know, those that would sacrifice essential liberty for a little security deserve neither. And I want to make sure that this cannot in any way, shape, or form be turned into some weird Big Brother, non-monitored situation. And someone spoke to the effectiveness of the cameras. I remember, I think it was Delmae Brien Kennedy that made national news where it was inappropriately fining people for like a year for millions of dollars. It was a huge issue in the city of Tampa, and I want to make sure that we're nowhere in that realm.
No, sir. Please, sorry. The cameras are only to be used during the crossing times, and they will only be used, the video images will only be used for the enforcement of those speeding infractions.
And do we know if after those, all of those fines that happened, I don't remember which year it was, that the technology is now to a point where it's not, I mean, it was, it was, I don't know if you were, if you were aware of the issue. I mean, it was really bad. It was, I think it generated that one intersection over several million dollars in one year, and it turned out several million of it was not from accurate readings of people actually running the red light. So do we know if it's gotten better since then? I haven't seen headlines.
I would hope as technology-
Okay, so I would just say that whenever we go through the bidding process, if whoever's offering up, it doesn't sound like the Commissioners are going to be involved in the bidding process. It'll be, it'll be specifically the Sheriff's Department. If we can, if that person can speak to whatever did happen when they, when they do present the bid, and if they can say, yeah, we're sure that that's not continuing to happen.
So Commissioner, to address your two points, this particular statute, and it is mirrored in the ordinance, has some pretty onerous or at least strict reporting requirements. So to allow unfettered, broken cameras to just go on for years would really not be possible given those reporting requirements that you have to send to the state. And the other issue, your Big Brother concerns, again, the statute actually, and this one's quite different than some of the ones we've seen in the past. When I was up here a minute ago, I said it's complicated. This is one of the complications. There are some genuine limitations on when these cameras are to be activated and what that footage can be used for. And then there's some destruction requirements. It has to be taken care of. It just doesn't last out there forever. So some of those concerns you're voicing, I think the people who drafted that statute may have had in mind. As far as the non-operational system, you're, I just consulted with the county attorney, so we're not aware of that, but it's certainly something we can keep in mind as we work with the vendor applicants and then the eventual vendor that we select.
So they have to, they're required in the statute to delete footage after a certain amount of time? Perfect. And will the signs be to the other, to the speakers' issue, are the signs posted? I mean, is it going to say, hey, these are, there's a red light camera here?
Well, that's what we have for red light cameras. There is a sign that's posted on each of the intersections. I would envision it'd be the same here.
Good. Yeah, I mean, we have to follow-
That's what we want the vendor to do, so that would be part of what we're looking for.
Yeah, and I think that, I mean, I do understand that families that don't have kids, not reading properly posted signage for driving is not an excuse for getting a ticket, frankly, so I appreciate, I appreciate you. I'm clarifying that for any, I know that there's a lot of people that are worried that this could turn into something more than it's supposed to be, but I, the way I understand it is that it's really tight and to the knit, so thank you very much, guys.
Mr. Brown, before you walk away, I got a question for you. I was going to wait till B2, but since Commissioner Winstall brought it up, I don't know if you recall, but it's been not two decades, almost that long, that we worked together on the red light camera issues. Do you recall when we went through that process, if the county handled the procurement or if the Sheriff's Office did?
I do recall, Commissioner. So the way that worked was somewhat what we're envisioning here with this ordinance. We did an RFP, the Sheriff's Office, and we selected ATS, which has now turned into Vera Mobility, and worked hand-in-hand with the county and the county's appellate procedure through the code enforcement and the citizens' board support. So it was through the county, through the Sheriff's Office, but we did have representatives from the county and the county attorney's office through every step of the way. I'll give you an easy example. I'll never forget the day and a half of BRQ that we did with ATS, and we definitely had an Assistant County Attorney there giving their input on behalf of the county at every step of the way for that entire day and a half. It took forever.
Great. I mean, while, again, losing my memory over the years, I didn't recall exactly who was responsible for the procurement.
Yep.
And candidly, I don't really care. I just, I thought it made sense for, to be consistent in that, in that policy or in that procedure on how we handled it back then. So if that's the plan, then-
That's the idea.
Okay. All right, thank you. Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you. Thank you very much. And let me just start out, Commissioner Owen, by thanking you for your work on this issue and your spearheading it, because I am unambiguously in favor of this and think it is excellent work by all of our staffs and something that's really important. As everyone knows, we are one of the most dangerous places in the, in the country for bicyclists and pedestrians, and there is a law in the state of Florida that says that if you live within two miles of a school, you aren't eligible for the bus. So we have kids everywhere throughout the county going to school every day near our school- schools, in the school zones that are, you know, we talk about it here all the time, and it's something that we have given a lot of attention to, the state of our sidewalks and the culverts and the dishes and the intersections and the pavement conditions. This is an excellent tool that will, I hope, slow down drivers. And I thought the callers, the comments that people don't know what time school starts and what time school lets out is not really a reason to not implement something like this. And I just want to remind everybody that when you put in a program like this, it frees up the Sheriff's Office to use the resources they would have to put out at the schools in other areas. So there's a benefit to school safety and to student safety. There's also a benefit to law enforcement generally. So I'm very comfortable with it. And again, I look forward to hoping that this will save some lives and save some injuries, and I think this was excellent work.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp.
I was pretty much going to make those same comments, and so I'll affirm that as well. But I, just since we have a minute, and I think for the public to understand, I don't know, I'm used to encountering these all the time where I live, I live right by high school, middle school, elementary schools. I see it all the time, but we're just, I mean, we're talking about, if someone could answer and affirm, just flashing lights that are around in a school zone, near a school, you know, that, that remind people that they need to slow down. And I guess the speed is typically what? Within the lighted area, 25 miles?
Typically 20.
20, 20 miles?
Some school zones, 15.
Right. And so when you, before, when it was amazing, 25,000 people, I mean, typically on the, this, even the neighborhood streets, the speed limits are very high already, but I'm thinking maybe you're talking about they're going 35 miles an hour. These 25,000 people were going at least 35 miles an hour where kids were.
At least 31 miles an hour. It was 11 mile an hour over the speed limit threshold. And the camp, and the caution lights, the school lights, the beacons are not going to be replaced. It'll just be an extra measure.
Thank you. And it's, I'll just, I mean, I know you can't do every school. I'd like every single school to be done. I was kind of shocked by the comments that, I don't have kids. I mean, you know, just people walking streets need to be safe. We need to be thinking about that. And as Commissioner Cohen said, we, we actually are, year after year after year, number two in the nation, number two in the nation for pedestrian and bicycle deaths. It's happened every year. And since COVID, and since we really took in our Vision Zero program, that, that number of fatalities, and this is not even mentioned, the, all the injuries, the serious injuries that happened, in fact, the sheriffs that were injured with a car, just, and that, it was an intentional act, but, you know, that, that cars do and leave on people's lives are, it's, it's an incredible problem. And I also think about, and I know that you won't have the, these there, I guess this could have been at the Chamberlain High School when that young student, or that student was killed some years ago, crossing the street right in front of Chamberlain High School. I won't ever forget that. The students that were, I think one was, one was a fatality, and one of the young students lived, got walking to middle school on Hillsborough Avenue, and it wasn't in front of the school, so this wouldn't help that. But we have been very negligent in our, our attention to this critical issue. So I'm, I'm very pleased to see this. I hope after it starts, we can only expand it because we, we need to expand it for the schools, but we need to also expand it for all, a lot of areas where people are crossing, and this is a good first start and a good take on it. So thank you.
It is our hope with our RFP that we'll have it at all schools eventually.
Thank you.
Yeah, real quick, and Commissioner Cohen, your point is well-taken as well. I, the only, some of the criticisms I have is why can't we have Sheriff's Department stake out these certain school zones? Well, we need our Sheriff's Department fighting other crimes, and this will free up our Sheriff's Department to be working on calls of robbery, a convenience store, whatever's happening. So I think it's real critical that we decipher that. And then two, you know, just talking about the red light cameras, and I've heard people really articulate to me why they don't like the red light cameras and, you know, they have to slam on the brakes sometimes with a yellow light, they go 24 hours. This is totally different. This is 30 minutes during a critical time when children are walking and riding their bikes to school. So I, keep in mind, you can still speed. You can still speed in the school zones. You just can't go 11 miles over. So, so I think, Commissioner Cohen, you alluded to it before. You said, hey, I'd be for putting points on people's records and stuff because this is not something that we can, we can play around with anymore, especially as traffic, especially on my side of town. I mean, I, I drive past about six schools on my way to work, and, you know, people pass by me flying by. And unfortunately, I think our Sheriff's Department would love to be able to enforce every school zone in every part of the county, but with our manpower, it's just not realistic. And then Commissioner Hagan, you had mentioned, talking about the RFP, and I, first of all, the sheriff needs to do this. I think the Sheriff's Department is the most qualified to issue this out, but we still have, there's oversight, correct, Ms. Beck, that that RFP will come back to us?
That's absolutely correct. It's actually mandated by the statute that it would have to come back to the board at a regular meeting where public comment is allowed, but you would be having it with all of the work done by the Sheriff's Office to evaluate.
Correct. So I think that's important to know, that, that still, that RFP comes back to this board, okay? Thank you.
All right. Well, I too want to say I fully support this program, want to thank Commissioner Owen for his leadership in bringing this forward. And we have a motion by Commissioner Owens and Commissioner Kemp. Please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Now B2?
B2 is to adopt the resolution, which is what I thought that motion was for.
Okay.
So moved?
No, that, that motion was to adopt it. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. Now, next item?
Yes, that was B2. That was the motion to adopt, adopt the resolution, adopting the ordinance, correct?
No, the original one was for D2.
D2 was the public hearing. Yes, okay. So let's clarify and just, let's do B2 separately. Correct.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Are you, do you have to do something separate for this?
It's a separate item.
Yes, go ahead.
Oh. Be very brief. Related to the ordinance that you just approved, this resolution establishes the quasi-judicial hearing procedures and assessment of administrative costs that are imposed when a school zone speed violation is upheld after a hearing, and it designates the Department of Veteran and Consumer Services to serve as the clerk as required by state law. And I'm available if you have any questions about the resolution.
Move for adoption.
A motion by Commissioner Owens and Commissioner Kemp, no comments on B2. Please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Next item.
Okay, sorry about that. All right, we have one more public hearing. This is item D3. This is regarding a brownfield area at 4810 South 50th Street. Jaksha Petrovic from Economic Development will present this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jaksha Petrovic, Hillsborough County Economic Development Department. This is the second of two public hearings for the designation of a brownfield area at 4810 South 50th Street in Tampa. On May 12th, 4810 Property LLC submitted an application requesting that Hillsborough County designate a parcel at 4810 South 50th Street. Tampa is a brownfield area. The designation provides certain potential benefits to the developer associated with the cleanup of the site. There is no financial impact to the county associated with this designation. Community meetings were held on August 28th and October 9th, 2023, and no public comment was received. County staff has reviewed the request and based on the documents submitted, finds that the proposed designation and subsequent development of the property meet the criteria set out under state law and recommends approval of the brownfield area designation. In conclusion, by approving the brownfield area designation and the attached resolution, you're finding that 4810 Property LLC has established all of the statutory criteria in Section 376.802(c) Florida statutes. I, along with the applicant, and Vivian Arena's battles with county attorney's office are available to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to the item? Not, can we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Myers. No comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried six to zero.
Final, time certain?
Final time certain is item B4. This is to approve an interlocal agreement with the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners and the Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners regarding the Hillsborough-Pinnellas Workforce Development Consortium, and then also to appoint two representatives of the board. And that is a follow-up from yesterday as well that was discussed, and you received a memo from Mary Helen Ferris about that. Ron Barton will present this item, and John Flanagan is also here with Career Source Tampa Bay to present this item.
Thank you. Good morning. Ron Barton, Assistant County Administrator. Again, it's B4. It's related to, it's a two-motion item, so I'll take A first. Approve an interlocal agreement between Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners and Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners to establish a Hillsborough-Pinnellas Workforce Development Consortium, and to delineate the roles and responsibilities of each county and the administration and operations of the publicly funded workforce development programs, to include acting as the Hillsborough County Chief Local Elected Official. You've heard us occasionally say Clio. That's what that phrase is for. And this is for a period of December 1, '23 to June 30, '25. And I'm here to answer any questions and ask for your consideration.
All right, thank you. So the first motion will be on to approve the interlocal agreement. Do we have any questions or comments? If not, can we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion, Commissioner Kemp. Or Second Commissioner, Commissioner Cohen, please record your vote on the interlocal agreement.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Commissioners, then, we have the second part of the item. It's to appoint two commissioners to this consortium. One of those commissioners will be a one-year term, and one of those commissioners will be a two-year term based on the interlocal requirements. So, Mr. Chair, it's up to you about how you want to proceed on the appointments.
All right, thank you. I know yesterday Commissioner Wostel indicated his interest in serving. I also heard through staff, Commissioner Myers is interested, and then the chair has the ability to designate someone. That's accurate, okay. And then, and then it makes sense, since the chairmanship is a one-year term, so that person would have the, the one-year term, as far as my designee. So I guess we'll just open it up. Commissioner Wostel, Commissioner Myers, do you?
Whatever you want, Commissioner Myers.
I'll take the two-year term. Thank you.
Cut straight to the point.
Commissioner Wostel, that means you also serve on the Career Source Board, so welcome.
Okay, can we have a motion?
Second.
Okay, we'll have a motion for Commissioner Myers to serve the two-year term, and Commissioner Wostel to serve the one-year term in the Career Source Board. No other comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you, Ron.
Could I just have one second?
Sure.
For the last five years, John Flanagan's been our CEO of Career Source Tampa Bay. You may have seen a press release, but he is going to serve the mayor of Atlanta as their administrator for workforce development and labor issues. A great opportunity for him, a bad one for us. We have before us this next year, Commissioner Wostel and Commissioner Myers, a lot of work to consolidate the two entities. We were really counting on John to be a steady force for us, but it's a great opportunity for him, and I just wanted to thank him publicly for his five years. It almost seems like 20, not because it was bad, but because of how much we did. And so I wanted to make sure that we put that on the record, that we very much appreciate John's tenure here and the work. And John, if you want to say anything, I put you on the spot, but thank you for allowing us to do that.
Good morning.
Thank you, Commissioners, and I'll be brief. John Flanagan, President and CEO of Career Source for a little while longer anyway. Wanted to just give everybody my heartfelt thanks for the opportunity to, to assume this role about five years ago. I've worked with almost everybody in this, in this commission, from Commissioner Kemp to Commissioner Myers to Commissioner Hagan, and certainly remember former Commissioner Merman for allowing me the opportunity. Just again, wanted to say thank you. It's been a fantastic experience for me. I hope the community got as much out of it as I did working for the community. So thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, John. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Yes, I just want to say, and I know many board members probably don't have the history of this, and I don't mean to put this quiet at this time, but I think it's important to know that these organizations were merged before, and there ensued a just terrible scandal for many of my years here at the commission where there was all, there was submitted, apparently thousands and thousands of people. We were recognized as being one of the top Career Source agencies in the state of Florida, if not the country, I heard, for all the recruitment we were doing. And it was, it was, it was not real recruitment. It was not real numbers. They were phony numbers, and it went on for a long time. And we took action as a board to separate as we had been before that. And we were very lucky, I think, to get John Flanagan and to hire him. And I'm really, I mean, I, I think this is a real loss, and I very much appreciated the professionalism and the just running a good organization that we had here in Hillsborough County. So hopefully, you know, we'll continue on to thank you for your service and good luck in Atlanta.
I appreciate that, Commissioner. Thank you. It was a very difficult choice. So just, it wasn't something that I, it took me a while to make the decision, but I truly believe that the organization is going to be, find the next great leader when, when it looks a little bit different. And there, just to touch on what happened, you know, a little bit before I got here, you know, the, the Department of Commerce and Career Source Florida had, and the legislature have put a lot of good safeguards in place to ensure what happened back in 2014 through '17 does not happen again. So, you know, this, this commission can rest assured that, you know, there's, there's guardrails in place to ensure that that kind of thing doesn't happen again.
And just for the record, too, we're still on the hook for a million dollars that we had to pay. Pinellas didn't have to pay it for whatever reasons, but we, we have, and we're trying to get it reimbursed through insurance, but that's not happening. And just, honestly, I do think it's a lesson about lack of accountability in these mergers and these organizations and a lack of our deciding, our own destiny and having control over that, I'll just say for the record.
And before I go, I just would like to thank Mr. Barton, Mr. Jones, and Jonathan for all of their help. The county's been a great partner since I've been here, so thank you to all of them as well, because they've been fantastic.
And I think, thank you, it's well placed, but Ron Barton, I think, shepherded in.
Fantastic.
You've done a good job, Mr. Barton, in, in working this, because it was a really complicated and difficult and disturbing issue that, you know, had really plagued us for years.
Commissioner Wostel?
Mr. Flanagan, if it's any solace, no one's going to get anything by me as we set this up. I reassure you of that.
Sounds great, Commissioner.
And leave me your playbook, so farewell. Thank you.
I will do that. You bet. Thank you.
Thanks for your leadership, John. Best of luck in Atlanta.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay.
Thank you. We can now move to the regular agenda. The first item is item B1. This is regarding a resolution by the Housing Finance Authority for multifamily revenue bonds within the city of Tampa. Mary Helen Ferris from the county attorney's office will present this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mary Helen Ferris with the county attorney's office. This item is asking the board to adopt a resolution which approves the HFA issuance of up to $50 million in bonds for the purchase and acquisition of a multifamily affordable housing complex in, on East Hillsborough Avenue. There are no county funds involved. The funding is coming through the sale of the HFA bonds and funding from the city of Tampa. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Can we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, Second Commissioner Cohen. No comments, please record your No comments, please record your vote on B1.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Helen. B3?
Thank you. The next item is item B3. We're going to have Ron come up again. This is to talk about Visit Tampa Bay's managed programs.
Thank you. Good morning Commissioners, again, Ron Barton, Assistant County Administrator. This is B3, and it's related to approving an agreement with Tampa Bay Convention and Visitors Bureau, DBA, Visit Tampa Bay for FY '24 and FY '25 to support its managed programs, visitor experience, out-of-area marketing, corporate demand campaign, and the business transit and small group campaign. The term of the agreement's from October 1st, '23 through September 30, '25, and the funding amount is for $3,696,000. By way of just describing this, I know we've had an agenda item with you last time that was the major funding source for Visit Tampa Bay. This is separated for a reason. These are actually specific programs that the TDC has recommended to the BOC that they do, and they manage them, but effectively, there's a nominal value to Visit Tampa Bay. These dollars get dispersed out into these programs. So we separate them from the overall management funding, just by way of background.
Okay, can we have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion Commissioner Wostel, second Commissioner Myers. No comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thanks, Ron. I got appointments?
Yes, sir. Item F1.
Good morning Commissioners. You have two boards this morning. Your first one is Healthcare Advisory Board. Please choose one from each category. Commissioner Hagan?
Two, and then three.
Commissioner Myers? Commissioner Cameron Sepita?
Two and three.
Commissioner Cohen?
One and three.
Commissioner Owen?
Two and three.
Commissioner Kemp?
One and three.
And Commissioner Wostel?
Two and three.
It will be Derek Ellis and Roya Tyson. And your next board is Housing Finance Authority. Please choose one. Commissioner Hagan?
Six.
Commissioner Myers?
Four.
Commissioner Sepita?
Six.
Commissioner Cohen?
Six.
Well, I'll answer for Owen then. Four.
Six.
Four.
Six.
Carson Macy.
Can we have a motion to confirm?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion now, Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Wostel. Please record your vote.
Commissioner Kemp? Motion carried seven to zero.
Next item?
Thank you. The next item is Commissioner Myers' item regarding staff providing a report regarding the expansion of the existing urban service area. Item F2.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, I'm going to ask the board to approve Agenda Item F2 as presented, but I do want to just share a few comments with us in regarding, it's many times that I've had the opportunity to meet with individuals regarding expanding our urban service area, and I look at, now is the time to do this, because so many people are moving here to Hillsborough County, and our growth is closing in on us. So I'm going to ask staff whether they bring a report back by March 24th, and if anything that the county attorney's office can also help with this and looking at this as well. Thank you.
Okay, so we got a motion by Commissioner Myers. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Owen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I know that as this is done, this is probably going to 98% affect my district. So there's only a couple ways to go on the urban service area line. So I would also, if you don't mind, making sure staff addresses live local and how any expansion to the USA would affect that, because like I said, I have a feeling that this is going to mostly impact my district. Thank you.
Well said. Commissioner Wostel?
Yeah, I think that this is a great item from Commissioner Myers, and as we're doing this, it's something that even Commissioner Cohen and I have said similar things, I believe. When we do it, we need to be thoughtful about how we're going to taper off into these other areas. I remember on my campaign trail, a lot was said, you know, we're going to combat urban sprawl, but what that really got those folks was a ton of density in apartments in those same areas instead of lower-density single-family homes. So now they're more angry. People have property rights, and that's not something that I would ever move to circumvent, especially farmers who have had their property rights trounced since NAFTA at least. I just want us to make sure that when we do it, if we do it, we do it thoughtfully, we taper off that edge into a meaningful way, we promote density back up way closer to the urban cores that we haven't done, and tapering off and respecting those three things that the Planning Commission themselves says that we're here to protect, which is urban, suburban, and rural, and not just promote urban lifestyles as we think about this. So, thank you.
Commissioner Kemp?
Thank you. I would say there hasn't been a lot of, you know, apartment multifamily at the edges of the urban service areas we know it now, and that there's, it has been a tapered-off plan, and I've always kind of supported that. I thought that made sense. And a lot of the infill has been in the closer-in areas. In fact, we've made a big deal about, even in our policy, about areas that have access to transit, which is so limited, unfortunately. The urban service area boundary restricts urban and suburban growth to limited parts of Hillsborough County. This contrasts with the rural area, where urban and suburban residential density is not permitted at this time. The boundary limits the costs we pass on to taxpayers by delineating where urban and suburban-style residential and commercial development is allowed. Expanding the urban boundary, make no, make no mistake about it, it will cost taxpayers when we already have a lot of infrastructure that we are so behind on. If we're going to expand the boundary, we must also find a way to pay for services and build costly infrastructure, including roads, public water, wastewater, stormwater, fire, sheriff, et cetera. We're already massively behind on that within the urban service area. Now we're going to have to figure out how we do that when we move the line for new areas. And I don't want to leave behind everybody else who's paying the taxes and still have never had the infrastructure that they've needed, and I think we're quite familiar with that. We know that construction costs are skyrocketing. I don't believe this is a good time to expand this boundary. And before we push urban and suburban development into the rural area, we must first get the best estimate we can of what this will cost. That is extraordinarily important, because we, all taxpayers in Hillsborough County will be paying the costs of this. So we must have a strong fiscal plan. We must know the costs involved in this, and a strong fiscal plan that absolutely budgets how we will pay, not only for the costs that we've accrued, but these new costs as well.
Okay, Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, I'll just touch on a couple of things. Well, first, what Commissioner Myers is bringing, it's a study, and it's going to address a lot of the concerns that Commissioner Kemp was just alluding to. It's not us voting on the expansion, it is to bring back a study so that we can be informed as a board. So that's one important concept. And two, Commissioner Wostel, I could not agree with you more. I live out there, I drive it every day. Areas like Water Set and South Riverview and East Brandon are riddled with apartment sprawl, and has really been, I think, the driving force on all the congestion from Lithia Pinecrest all the way to 301. So I couldn't agree with you more on that. And again, I just want to allude to the fact that I think, but Commissioner Myers, I don't want to put words in your mouth, you are requesting a study that is going to inform the board so that we could move forward accordingly. So thank you.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Owen, you are correct. Commissioner Kemp, allow staff to come back and give us a report of the information, and then we can accept whatever comments that this board wishes to make at that time. But let's not beat it up and kill it before they can come back with the information by March 24th. Thank you so much.
All right, Commissioner Kemp?
And I'll just say, I don't think there's any sense that it is being killed in any way. There seems to be a lot of enthusiasm, but I think that report must, must take in, you know, calculating the costs for anything we do should be an integral part of what we will have to pay and do in order to expand it, and how we will do that. That should be part of any idea that we have that we will expand this.
I think, and I want to commend Commissioner Myers for bringing this forward. We do need to be strategic in our planning, like Commissioner Kemp is suggesting. Yes, this will cost taxpayers money, but I think that's why in the agenda item, Commissioner Myers has identified public-private funding options for providing the infrastructure and services, because we know that that's going to be required. The Planning Commission has been suggesting this, if not outright saying it for years, that we're going to have to expand the USA. So I don't think we can keep ignoring the elephant in the room, if you will. It's just a matter of time, and we should start that process, and I think this is the right way to go about doing it. So the motion by Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Cohen. No other comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Kemp voted no.
All right, Bonnie.
Thank you. The next item is Commissioner Wostel's item, item F3, regarding making changes to the fee schedule and fee waiver policy.
Commissioner Wostel?
This is another non-exciting policy cleanup. On the website, we kind of contradicted ourselves. We grouped and encouraged nonprofits and not-for-profit events in one category, but we had an old policy that arbitrarily defined only nonprofits, and it was being practiced to exclude not-for-profits that were doing very similar things, so.
Okay, Commissioner Owen?
I just want to thank you on this. The Ruskin Seafood Festival is in my district, it's a big deal, and take the time to invite all the commissioners to it when it's coming up, so thank you. I'll second.
So motion Commissioner Wostel, second Commissioner Owen. No other comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Bonnie?
And final, the last item are future discussion items.
Any future issue items for board members? Commissioner Kemp?
Thank you. And in regards to expanding the urban service area, and we talked about this just a couple weeks ago, this came up. I don't think it's in process or anything, but what I want is a staff report on all the areas of unincorporated Hillsborough County where residents are on city of Tampa water. This includes parts of Town and Country, that was brought up, Progress Village and the university area, as I understand, all the outskirts. I was surprised at the scope of it, apparently. I've learned that residents in these areas pay a 25% premium to the city of Tampa because they are on city water, but they're not city residents or county residents. And so I want a report on the scope and what we are doing or what we can do about this.
Bonnie, you got that? Commissioner Wostel?
Yeah, you all learned that from me, so I'll be supporting whatever it is. I would like a report from the county administrator that demonstrates the percentage of funds from ELAP that have gone towards conservation easements, and what applicability we can do to expend the remaining ELAP funds to more actively promote and extend that to the agricultural community of Hillsborough County. Our ag community has been under assault for decades, and it's only going to get worse. And if we really wanted to combat sprawl, we would be putting forth all tools that we have available to keep farmers in Hillsborough County. So, thank you.
Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you very much. As many of you saw in the news yesterday, SWIFTMUD has imposed some water restrictions that are going to actually go into effect prior to our next county commission meeting. And I know that Lisa is here from our staff, and they've been working on this diligently to prepare everybody, but the bottom line of the matter is, starting December 1st, we're going to one-day-a-week watering. So if perhaps you just want to say a few words about our plan for the next couple of weeks to get the word out, that would be excellent. I just want to say that Tampa Bay Water this week, Commissioner Wostel and I were there discussing this, and our staff was there as well, and they'd been working to prepare for this for some time, but it was formally announced yesterday, there is no action that has to be taken by our board.
Welcome. Very quickly, we don't have a board discussion on issues during future issues, but this is a matter of importance, but please be brief.
I will, thank you. Thank you, Chairman, thank you, members of the board. Yes, we are going to be starting a one-day-per-week watering restriction. It will begin on December 1st and go through the end of February. During that time, HOAs will also not be able to enforce related to plant matter that might not look up to their normal standards if it does not have the water that it was used to before. So that is also important to keep in mind. We are starting a tremendous outreach effort. We will have postcards going out. We've changed our website, you should see that going out today. We're going to be using email addresses and text messages for people who have signed up. We are coordinating with the media, and we're going to have a continuous message running in the utility bills starting on December 1st as well, as a reminder.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you very much. Lisa Ray, Director of Water Resources.
Okay, with that, we're adjourned.